I was gonna do an introduction. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate everybody taking some time out of their evening to attend our meeting. I was just gonna do a real brief introduction and kind of explain a little bit as to why we're having this meeting. And that sort of put it in the context of the broader planning effort. Then I'll turn it over to Laurel and she can take us through, you know, an overview of some of the content. And then we'll obviously listen to what everyone has to say in terms of public comments. So first and foremost, the climate and energy plan that we are endeavoring to do is, you know, at least, I don't think is news to anyone, is an incredibly important effort in the situation that we're all facing today with, you know, evidence all around us of our changing climate and the impacts it's having on a daily basis. You know, it's important that we take action and do the things that we can to help address the situation. And while what we do in Watertown isn't going to solve the planet's problems, I think it is important that we do what we can to, you know, take steps to move in the right direction and hopefully be part of a much larger, much broader, you know, solution to this, this massive issue that we all face. So in terms of what we're doing tonight, one of the things we did when we started the process, we obviously hired a consultant to help us. And Laurel's been doing an incredible job at staff level of, you know, doing all the hard work of bringing things together with the town staff. But one of the things that we thought would be helpful and would be a good approach would be to have the general public much more involved in crafting the document as opposed to the staff and the consultant taking some input and going off and crafting it. So what we did was created a committee of representatives from a variety of interests, you know, from residents in town, both have some expertise and some knowledge and obviously some interest. And have them spend a lot of time, and they have spent a tremendous amount of time, working on specific elements of the plan and working to craft some of the language and some of the approaches that we ought to take to try and tackle some of these tremendous issues that we all face. I think that that process of creating that advisory committee and having them both interact with the interest groups which they're members of and with the public that they deal with on a daily basis, as well as spending the time and energy to craft elements, has been a very, a very good one. I think it's created some really good content for us. As some of you may be aware, there are some members of the public who who really desired to have an opportunity to be heard and to have an opportunity as members of the public, with members of the public, to have an opportunity to voice concerns and express their desires. So we're having this meeting tonight to provide an opportunity to do that. You know, I hope that as Laurel goes through some of the content of the plan, you'll find an awful lot of really good stuff that's been crafted as part of the plan. But we do want to hear what you have to say and what your comments are as well. So hopefully that gives a little bit of context to how we got to where we are and what we'll do tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Laurel.
Thank you, Steve. That's very helpful context. I know that there are some people here who have been very involved and are all caught up. And then there are probably some who are less familiar and know less of the details. So I'm trying to split the difference and give a very brief presentation, but give you enough information. So I want to review a little bit of the timeline and where we're headed, share some draft goals and strategies that we've developed so far, preview what we're calling implementation blueprints, which will be very helpful in creating a very action-oriented plan. Then we'll open it up for discussion and we'll hopefully wrap up around 8:30. But obviously if there's more discussion to be had, you know, we can extend for a few minutes. We want to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak. Just a couple administrative things. When we get to the discussion phase, please use the raise hand function on your Zoom screen. If you're dialing in by phone, feel free to just speak up if you don't have that function. This presentation will be available afterwards on the city website. The recording will be available on Watertown Cable Access. And my colleague Laura Wiener, our transportation planner, is taking notes tonight. So all the comments made tonight will be recorded and posted publicly and incorporated into the draft plan. So in terms of the planning process timeline, we kicked it off last spring. We immediately engaged in a lot of community outreach in various ways, which I'll go into in a little bit. But we initially set up sort of a vision and some broader goals that we wanted to accomplish with this plan. Into the summer and early, early fall, we worked with that stakeholder advisory group that Steve mentioned, as well as pulling in public comments that we had gotten in, in order to identify actions that we want to incorporate into the plan and continue to refine and prioritize those based on feedback. Right now, we are in the phase of developing the draft plan. We're also developing quantifiable metrics that we will use to measure our success going forward. And we're also developing these implementation blueprints, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We're continuing to engage the community. In fact, looking forward to the draft plan, which is scheduled to be released in February. That will be followed by a formal public comment period of a few weeks. And then we hope to finalize the plan towards the end of March and then, you know, really be able to hit the ground running with implementation in the spring. In terms of engagement, Steve mentioned that we created this stakeholder advisory group, which was, you know, really forty-some-odd stakeholders representing advocacy organizations, community groups, key city staff, climate scientists and interest groups in the city and in the region. And their role is really to be a two-way communication street, as it were, to incorporate feedback from the entities that they represent and come together and develop collaboratively those sort of draft goals, strategies and actions that we are formulating right now. We also have received and incorporated over 150 public comments between June and November. Those comments and the staff responses to them are viewable on a publicly accessible Google Drive that we created for this process. As I mentioned, there will be another public comment period for the draft plan. But we always want to hear from you. My email is, my email address is at the end of the presentation and I'm always here to receive your input. For this process, we also wanted to get sort of a broad level of engagement. So we carried out a couple different surveys. The first survey over the summer was more focused on priorities and concerns that people had. We had 330 participants in that survey. Survey two was more focused on opportunities and barriers when it would come to actually implementing climate action strategies. That, that just closed in November, so we'll be posting a report on that, that survey soon. We also engaged deeply with renter and landlord populations because almost half of Watertown residents are renters. So we again did specific surveys for both of those groups, as well as focus groups for both populations. And we recently just launched a resilient housing resource center, which is a great tool to either search for specific resources, whether it's financing opportunities, how-to guides, technical assistance, based around a different sets of issues. And you can sort whether you're a renter or a landlord or property owner. So be sure to check that out. In terms of the content of the actual plan, the plan will be separated into five topic areas or plan elements. We have buildings and energy, natural resources, infrastructure and waste, transportation and mobility, and public health and community preparedness. So each plan element will follow this, this specific structure. So we have a goal, we have one or, one or more goal statements. Those are broad about what we want to accomplish. Beneath that, we have strategies, one or more strategies, so that's how we will accomplish it. Then beneath that, we have specific actions, which must be undertaken in a specific timeline in order to achieve that strategy. So there's a lot of detail that needs to go into this plan, as you can tell. Each plan element will have quantifiable metrics for tracking our progress. So for example, a metric would be the percentage of residents enrolled in Watertown electricity choice. So we will have a baseline and then an interim goal and a 2050 goal for that metric. For every action that is in the plan, we will identify a lead entity responsible for carrying it out, a cost magnitude, a timeframe, and its contribution to either greenhouse gas mitigation, climate resilience, or both. And that contribution will be quantified when possible. So as you might be able to understand, there's a lot of content and I'm not going to be able to go through it all in a reasonable time tonight. So this is just an example. For, for the buildings and energy section, the first goal is by 2050, 100% of electricity is sourced from renewable sources. The strategy, you know, developed so far is to accelerate the transition to renewable energy. Now, that can be done in multiple ways. So beneath that strategy, we have four actions outlined here that will, when completed, help us achieve that strategy and that goal. So we also have some strategies that don't really fit into any of the plan elements because they are cross-cutting. So those that we've developed so far are listed here, one of which was very much prioritized by the public feedback that we've gotten so far. And that is to add capacity, staff capacity and resources to the energy manager's office, as well as the DPW forestry division and the planning department in order to successfully implement this plan. There's a lot of work ahead of us, so we definitely need to meet that moment in terms of capacity. So I'm going to just go through the goals and strategies for each plan element. Again, those actions, those detailed actions, there's just a lot of content there. I can pull it up later if we want to go into those details, but for now, I'm just going to run through these. So for buildings and energy, as I said in my example, the first goal has to do with 100% renewable electricity sources. So our strategy is to accelerate that transition. And that's can be everything from regulatory to outreach and education. Goal two has to do with our building stock. So by 2050, Watertown's buildings are efficient, resilient and carbon neutral. The strategy encapsulates multiple different facets of that. So the first strategy is to require high standards for efficiency and carbon neutrality for new construction. Strategy two has to do with existing buildings and electrifying those that run on fossil fuels. And strategy three has to do with energy efficiency of existing buildings. So actively promoting deep retrofit and conservation programs. For the natural resources section, we have one goal and that is by 2050, Watertown's natural assets and green spaces are enhanced, equitably distributed and delivering full ecosystem benefits. We have four strategies here. The first is to enhance our forest and open space parcels. And you can imagine actions would span from working on public property, as well as what we can do on, you know, developers and redevelopment processes on private property. Second strategy has to do with enhancing and diversifying our tree canopy. That's something definitely of growing importance in Watertown right now. The third strategy is to promote regenerative landscaping and maintenance practices. And the fourth has to do with quantity and quality of stormwater runoff. We're going to see a lot more storms, a lot more flooding. Want to minimize the impact of that on our homes and businesses, et cetera. For infrastructure and waste, we have two goals. Goal one, by 2050, Watertown is a net zero waste community. So that strategy is to transition both community perception and action around consumption and disposal practices. There are a lot of wide-ranging actions that are underneath that strategy. Everything from education and outreach to investigating the potential for composting or organics recycling in town. Goal two, by 2050, Watertown's infrastructure is well-maintained and resilient to the impact of climate change. So this strategy is about systematically integrating climate change projections into the design of all new and upgraded infrastructure projects. For transportation and mobility, we have two goals. Number one, by 2050, non-vehicular transportation options are accessible, affordable and connected throughout Watertown. So our strategy is to enhance and actively promote zero-carbon mobility options for travel. So this encompasses actions around public transit options, bicycling, making it safer and more, more pleasant to walk in town, et cetera. Goal two has to do with vehicles. So by 2050, 80% of all vehicles in town are electric. So in order to accelerate that shift, we're going to have to think about actions around infrastructure like charging stations, outreach and education, convincing people to buy their next car as an electric vehicle, switching the municipal fleet to electric vehicles over a certain period of time, et cetera. So finally, public health and community preparedness. We have one goal, by 2050, Watertown is a model for community resilience to climate change. There are four strategies. Number one, to promote climate literacy through education and training. Number two, acknowledge climate change's impact on and provide resources to enhance overall community health and well-being. Number three, provide equitable access to emergency preparedness and response resources. And number four, promote overall community connectivity. So as I mentioned, we are also creating what we're calling implementation blueprints. And these are in progress. On the right hand is an example of a sort of a two-page blueprint from another climate plan. These are basically a how-to guide for implementing the actions in this plan that need to be broken down further into specific steps. So as you'll see in my example, each step is assigned a timeframe and key partners that need to be involved in order to achieve it. So for example, infrastructure and waste. We already went through the goal about well-maintained and resilient infrastructure, the strategy of integrating climate change projections into new and upgraded infrastructure projects. One of the proposed actions under that strategy is to investigate local backup power, microgrid and battery options in coordination with utilities. So what does that look like in a blueprint? We have a description. We have a champion, which right here would be the Department of Public Building. We have an overall timeframe, which is one to three years. If we continue, here we have currently in this draft blueprint, we have five implementation steps that need to take place. And they are each tagged with a timeframe and partners that need to be involved. Finally, the last part of the blueprint is to think about equity considerations. Identify financial tools and technical resources that could help us achieve this action. And then finally, identify any potential implementation barriers and ideas for overcoming those. So again, those are in progress, but we're, we're really drilling down into detail. And this is going to be a very actionable plan when we're, when we're through. So next step, as I said, the draft plan will be released in February. There will be a public comment period. And the final plan is scheduled to be finished up by late March. You know, that's my email address. You can always send additional comments, concerns, ideas to me. Don't have to wait till the draft plan. I'm always here. You can also visit the Resilient Watertown website, which has more plan information. And you can always view all the draft materials that have been generated so far on that Google Drive that I mentioned. All right, thank you. I know that was a lot of information. I tried to get through it quickly. But I think we can open it up for discussion. I think that I, Laura is going to take notes. I will probably keep the presentation up so that in case people want to see different slides, I can navigate to that. But if you want to use the raise hand function, feel free. And maybe Ed and Steve can help me kind of navigate who, who wants to go, who wants to speak next.
Sure. So as Laurel said, there's a lot of information. I think we're well on our way to a great plan. So we'll be happy to take comments or try to answer any questions. Nancy.
So much for my not saying anything. I'm very impressed and I'm delighted at both the widespread engagement and also the ambition of the plan as far as I can see it right now. As a, I'm involved with the Massachusetts Resilience and as part of that on their board and as part of that, I've been following. And I'm going to be following much more closely all the news about the flood of infrastructure money, we hope, coming our way. And I would love to share with whoever the appropriate person is, what the information I put together. And because I feel as if, you know, we'd be going through this at some appropriate path toward 2050. But when there's a big wash of money coming from the feds and from the state, you know, through the state, I hope we're ready to, to know how it fits into our plan and grab more than our share. So.
No, absolutely. That's a, that's a great point. It's a very opportune time. Laura Wiener, our transportation planner, and I just had a conversation with someone from the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Because they're trying to glean, you know, what projects are out there that, that could receive funding and would align timing-wise. So, you know, definitely there, there are some transportation-related alignments, as well as potentially, you know, stormwater infrastructure and things like that. So we're definitely eagerly anticipating, you know, being able to tap into that. And so we'd love to get, you know, what information you have and maybe coordinate with DPW too, because obviously they do a lot of the actual implementing of projects.
For sure. Great.
Thank you, Nancy. Bob?
Yeah, I'm a little late to this discussion, but I'm involved with the group that is looking at making transportation better for older residents in Watertown. And I've been working with Deborah Peterson and Jean Trubek and Ernesta on coordinating with people that are interested in environmental issues around transportation. So I'm on this to sort of endorse adding the concept of on-demand, on-demand transportation network to, if possible, to the plan. We've got a long way to go with this. And also just, I need a little direction. Is there someplace on the town website where I can get in touch with Laurel and do it through the town website?
Sure, I can also just, if you want to write my email address down, it's on, it's on this website. I can also, I mean, I could like take this down and add my phone number too. But I should be in the staff directory, probably under conservation agent, because that's also another hat that I wear.
Okay. I can, I can write January email address.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah, I think both to some extent Bob's point and Nancy's point. You know, I think that, that one of the challenges of this Herculean effort that we all face regarding climate change is, you know, trying to figure out ways to, to make significant change and make it happen. And Nancy's right that, you know, these funds that are available or are assumed to be available from the federal government that are, you know, large in volume, you know, present an opportunity for us to address some things that otherwise might not be able to be addressed just because of the price tag. So it does represent an opportunity. And I think one of the other challenges, big challenges that we have is that some of these things are evolving technology. And, you know, it's, it's easy to say, let's wait until the technology catches up. But at the same time, we don't have time to wait. So it's a little bit of the proverbial, you know, building the plane while you're flying, trying to address some of these issues. Deborah?
Hi. So I've been following this, following along on this and particularly interested in the transportation piece and have had many conversations. The, the larger thing that's, I'm still baked about is we have, the town has climate goals. So, and then I see these actions which are for the next three and six months. And what I'm going to want to know, and I think a lot of other people is, is this plan just going to be, you know, for a short time period? And I guess I would like to see it identify how close these actions are going to get to our goal and identify areas where we need either more expertise. We need to, you know, experiment, innovate, learn more about what other people are doing, like spell out the pieces that the plan, things that still need to be done that the plan doesn't include.
Yep. Excellent point. I should have mentioned that we do plan on evaluating and revisiting this plan on, at regular intervals, at which point, you know, maybe, and hopefully in many ways, you know, technology has advanced or new programs have come, you know, onboard that we can integrate and take advantage of and then push our goal further or get a clearer picture of, you know, when we will get to our goal. In, in a lot of these, it's, it's a little bit of a case of we, there are like known, unknown, you know, and, and technology can change so quickly. So we definitely do plan on evaluating and, you know, meaningfully updating this plan at regular intervals. I definitely agree that we should probably be able to, by the end of this planning process, identify areas where we need more information or we need to stay up on the cutting edge of ideas or we need to, you know, pilot things or, you know, kind of continue to, to innovate and brainstorm, even as we're implementing the, the actions that we sort of know we can do and when.
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting, Deborah, that you, you mentioned it's so many things seems short-range and immediate actions, which is true. I think one of the most significant comments that we've gotten from the public has been that, that we need to speed things up and do things faster. That, you know, looking at goals that talk about, you know, 2050 are, are too late. And so, you know, I think we're trying to balance the needs, you know, of what we need to do with those concerns about the immediacy of, of addressing issues, but also understanding that some of these things take time to implement and, and are going to be spaced out over the, you know, the, the, the planning horizon. But as Laurel said, we'll revisit and, you know, I'm sure that there are lots of people that are going to be very closely watching what happens and will let us know. And we're not meeting those goals and objectives and implementation strategies. So it's, it's a daunting task, no doubt.
Yeah, and if I may, Deb, you make a great point. We also really need to keep track of the regulatory environment. I was talking with MassSave today and they're really changing a lot of the incentive structures. And we want to make sure we're on top of that. You know, all of a sudden conversions to gases out, but heat pumps and ground source heat pumps are in and they've really bumped up the rebates on those. So another integral part of the plan is making sure we make, you know, and they've really bumped up the rebates on those. So another integral part of the plan is making sure we make, you know, full use of the resources available to us. So, good point.
Bernadette?
Hi, my name is actually Susan Ladue. I'm using my partner's computer because mine didn't want to cooperate tonight.
Well, you'll just have to be Bernadette for tonight then.
Sorry, Steve?
So you'll just be Bernadette for tonight then?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be Bernadette Susan. How's that?
There you go.
All right. I wanted to ask a question about, about commercial building, about commercial construction. I, I really love that the, the, the building and energies part of the plan has come such a long way with a lot of hard work. I have a, a general concern that I, I'm not feeling is quite addressed and that is communicating through the agencies that work with commercial contract, commercial developers essentially, communicating the, the determined energy that we have, not to use a, a word, but anyway, the determination the town feels to get people to use climate friendly materials and, and processes and equipment. And sometimes those things are quite expensive. So it takes a, it takes a relationship with the kind, with the developer to figure out what his or her margins, profit margins are and how to work all that stuff in. But I'm wondering if anyone's thinking about how to get the town committees that work with contractors to work with them around more climate friendly construction and to ask them to bring in better, better equipment, whether it's solar equipment or heat pumps or whatever, and to, and to work out and compromise around the money that that costs. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I could, I'll just respond to that to some extent. I, I think the, one of the frustrations that, that you might be expressing relates to some extent to what, you know, groups like the Planning Board or Zoning Board of Appeals can require of developers and and there's one, it's one thing to ask someone to, to do something because we think it's the right thing to do or it's a good idea. But it's another thing, if that's what our ordinance says you, you have to do.
Yeah, yeah.
I think groups like the Planning Board and, and to some extent, staff, you know, we're very good at requiring what, what our ordinances say or require. So I think the effort of the plan really takes aim at, looking at our rules and regulations or ordinances and seeing where we can supplement those and add to those to require things, more things of developers. And, and the value, the other value in that is it creates a level playing field that everyone has to, to provide that same, you know, advantageous element into, into their projects because it's required and everybody has to do it. So what exactly those requirements are that we need to add to, to our ordinances, you know, part of that's in the plan. It talks about some of the things we, we should add. But that's go through that process of being heard by, by the council and being adopted and, and creating that, that change in the playing field for everyone. So it's not that the Planning Board or staff doesn't want to make buildings as green as possible. We do. But, but we have to, you know, also be respectful of what, what we can require. And so I think again, the plan effort is really looking at, well, so let's look at those rules and see what we can add to those and strengthen it.
I, I wasn't thinking so much about requiring. That's, I mean, that requires a lot of change to, to institute things as requirements. And I was thinking more of influencing developers and talking to them about it and urging them. And I, I just don't sense that mentality yet. And I, I think it, I think it takes time and I think it takes education. But, but somebody has to start the role ball rolling. And I'm not casting aspersions in particular at the planning committee. I find that when developers come before various committees, whether it's a zoning variance or whatever, that, that the issue doesn't come up of, you know, have you, have you thought about heat pumps instead of what you're doing? You know?
Yeah.
And, and I, I found that some developers are very open to talking about those things and whether or not they can, can include them. Some are not. I, I mean, some depends on money, but it's sort of, it's sort of a, how do we move ourselves as a town more into that mentality?
Good.
Yeah, it's a really good point.
Jean?
And sticking to the buildings, what are the plans of the Watertown Housing Authority for making the public housing, the low income housing net zero? That, that would probably take a lot of work, but you know, if, if we're going to get there, then town owned housing has to get there.
Yeah, definitely. We, we've had some great conversations with the Executive Director of the Housing Authority. Honestly, in general, a lot of what he struggles with is just person power to make certain changes. He just has a pretty, a pretty small staff and you know, we're, we're certainly trying to figure out whether the, the city can, you know, assist them in, in, you know, certain ways. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I do have specific information from him from a recent update about upgrades that they are planning and recently planning to make and recently made to several of their properties. I can forward you that information later on. I just, I don't remember if Steve remembers or Ed, I don't.
I, I think there are some projects that they're doing which not only look at energy efficiency, but also accessibility. You know, obviously they're dealing with juggling a lot of different priorities, a long waiting list for housing and, and the need to make improvements to individual buildings, but certainly energy efficiency is one of those and, and something they incorporate into all their projects.
Some of the projects might really be well suited to ground source heat pumps because they encompass a lot of enough land that it would be feasible. And that would make a big difference. And, and just as a side question, are there, are there residents of the Housing Authority Buildings, members of the, let's see, is it the SAG?
We, we inquired about that. The Executive Director didn't have a firm sense of anyone who would be willing or, you know, and, and they don't have like obvious leadership structure, like they don't have a, a tenant group or things like that. I think maybe one is starting. One of our sort of ongoing priorities, especially around the, the concept of assisting renters and landlords because so many Watertown residents rent, you know, Watertown Housing Authority renters do, you know, fall into that category. So we're certainly continuing to talk to the Housing Authority about how we can sort of meaningfully engage with, with their tenants and assist them in, in, in any way we can.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Jolly. Can unmute yourself?
I started by saying I wanted to thank all of you for doing this. I think you've done a really good job in the presentation. So thank you. I was just curious about greening the grid and that it would, it seems to me that even if we're going to electrify or use electrification, if we, if our green, if our grid isn't green, we're still actually using fossil fuels. So I didn't, I didn't see and I, maybe it was because I, I got called away briefly, whether there was something in the plan about moving to have Watertown in our CCA or whatever be 100% green. And like I said, it may be there and you may have talked about it, but I got called away briefly. So I could have missed that part.
Yeah, I'm pleased to, to speak to some of that. Hi, Jolly. Multiple parts there is not only the electricity supply, both on the residential side with items such as Watertown Electricity Choice, where our goal is to get to 100%. Also the aggregation on the town side, which we are greening. Have bumped up what was required for green energy in there. That also has a goal, you know, to get to 100%. The other big point you brought up too is the infrastructure and greening of, not only greening of the grid, but just grid upgrades. The good, the latest Build Back Better, there's like $500 billion in there for grid upgrades, which is something that is desperately needed throughout the entire United States. You know, we're still operating off of a grid that Thomas Edison would, would raise easily. And it just really, one of my, as we push toward more and more electrification, the grid has to be addressed. And I was really pleased to see that the political might appears to be there to be working that. That's obviously a much bigger thing than Watertown, but just getting the green, the grid upgraded to take all these additional solar supplies, all these additional, you know, electric cars and electric buildings is a huge, huge step forward. And it appears like as a country, we're starting to do that.
Well, that's good.
Take it.
Nancy?
Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to highlight something I think Ed mentioned earlier, which is the, the merits of keeping an eye on what's happening with regulations, because I'm not sure about other areas, but I know in stormwater and in water in general, there are changes coming and they're going to fit into this along with the, the money coming. So I think, you know, the, what's happening around us and how it's going to push some of what our goals are, is going to be really important to track. So I, I agree with you. Changing regulations, they are, they are in flux for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that'll sort of be part of our continual, you know, reevaluation and revisiting of this plan is to check in with all of those sort of pieces that are not really within our control, but very much affect the plan.
Yeah, you know, I think one of the things that's going to be really important is some of those advances that will make some of the things we're going to try to achieve possible. Because quite frankly, some of these things are going to be hard to achieve without some of these advances. So so we're, we're hopeful that, you know, this ever evolving and incredibly quickly evolving, you know, industry of, of helping through technology to address some of these issues is going to be an important part of implementation. All right, any other comments, questions? Laurel, do you want to talk about next steps?
Yes. So if you have further thoughts, feel free to send them to me at my email there. We will post this presentation as well as the full list of goals, strategies and actions that have been developed so far up on the city website as well as the Resilient Watertown website as soon as tomorrow, hopefully. If you want to comb through that in more detail and, you know, absorb it a little bit more and, and send me your thoughts, feel free. We will be continuing to work with our consultants on developing a, a draft plan that will be ready for the public to review in, in February. And that will include all of those implementation blueprints that I previewed, you know, sort of gave an example of in that, in that draft plan. And then we'll have another comment period and hopefully get this done and towards implementation in, in the spring.
Counselor's out there.
Thank you. Good evening. Sorry, it was a little late raising my hand there. I was just wondering, I found it and now I lost it again and I can't find it. I know on the end of your materials, it says on the Google Drive. I didn't know if you could spell out the actual URL or remind me where the link is from the Resilient Watertown, because it's not, it's not a, there's nothing that says Google Drive. I forget which menu item I found it under.
So I think it's on the landing page. Let me just go here to the, and then if you go down, oh yes, public is invited to review all materials generated. That should take you to the Google Drive. Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, it's not on the dashboard. It's on the climate and energy.
Climate and energy plan page. Yes.
Okay.
And all of that is also sort of hyperlink in this presentation. So if people want to access the Google Drive that way, you can do that too.
Laurel, before we go, I just wanted to touch on and actually echo something Stephen mentioned upfront is, you know, you mentioned the amount of people we've had with the Stakeholder Advisory Group. We've got a bunch of the team leads on the call now. And I just really feel that the, the time and talent that the Advisory Group folks have added to this process have just been enormous. And I think the entire plan is so much better because of it. So just as a, you know, as a town staff person, city staff person, pardon me, like to again, thank them so much for their time and their efforts on this. It's just been, just been incredible and great to see so many people working so hard on this.
Yeah, I fully agree. It's, it's not easy and, and everyone has lots of other priorities that they're working on. So we really, really appreciate everyone's efforts in this.
And both Laurel and Ed's efforts as well. They've both done a tremendous job bringing a lot of expertise from the town's side as well, city side, excuse me.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep. Well, and, and not hearing or seeing any other comments or questions, I'll, I'll just add, thank you all for again, spending some time with us tonight and you know, talking about this very important effort. It's, it's really critical to our future and something that I think we're all very, very committed to and, you know, appreciate everyone taking the time and, and having interest in, in this effort. And we'll hope that you, once we have the draft plan available in February, that you'll take the time to look it over and, and again, participate in the conversations about that and provide us your thoughts. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Laurel.
Yeah, great. I don't have much more to add, but thank you all so much for taking the time and look forward to hearing more of your ideas and input as we get this plan into shape. So thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.